Right, so this is the same.
Okay, perfect. I'm still like slowly, slowly, I mean, we just cut couches.
Three years ago, if you don't have, if you don't have them back at you, like, that's what you just walk it out. Just because I've worked.
We had a big beanbag for like three months. Now we're probably over all of it.
Perception.
My son said, "What happened to the place to wrestle?" I'm like, this was never meant for wrestling.
It's downstairs, you can wrestle down.
I had another place to wrestle.
Oh, but that's all the fun.
You could jump off the table.
You can.
On the beanbag.
I mean, it's, it's like parkour.
You can put it down on the step, bottom of the step. Just kidding.
All right, it is really hard work. It is Tuesday, October 18th, 1:00 PM. Time for a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. It is, I believe, Commissioner Underwood's turn for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow? Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful for all that you're doing for us, not only in our community, Father, but in our region and in our state. Father, we thank you that we live in a nation, Father, that believes and is established on the word and principles of God. Today, Father, we ask for your wisdom as we make decisions, and we thank you for protecting each and every one of the city employees, especially our first responders, Father, who put themselves in the line of danger day after day. Father, we are so grateful for the way in which you are moving in our lives, and today we give you glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, next up is approving the minutes from last time. Did anybody see any changes that need to be made? Nope. All right, and they'll stand approved. Next, we have a public comment. This is a time for anybody here who is not having an item on the agenda. They can come up and we can have a discussion. We have five minutes allocated to it. If you do come up, please state your name. Anybody from public? All right, we'll move on.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Vicky Harburger from Mosaic to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of October 2022 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas. Vicky?
We'll have you do comments, and then we'll approve it. And then we'll make him read it.
Sounds, sounds.
Sounds good?
Yeah. Didn't type all those big words for nothing.
Yeah.
So, wanted to thank you today for having us come in. And today I have with me Aaron Ospa, he works at The Ice House, and Don Hyatt works at the Pizza Hut Delivery, and Deanna Bartles is our job coach. And National Disability Employment Awareness Month allows us to shine a light on a section of our community that is not always considered when talking about job openings. Mosaic in Garden City helps people with diverse needs secure those jobs in our community. Of all people with disabilities, those with intellectual and developmental disabilities often have a harder time gaining employment as many people overlook their many abilities. It is proven that community members with disabilities have goals and dreams of meaningful employment, as well as how they can benefit our local businesses. We're so blessed to be a part of a mission that believes in possibilities and a community that is willing to partner with us to achieve those real-life outcomes. Our current employers and those that create volunteer opportunities are Pizza Hut Delivery, Papa John's, Arby's, The Ice House, Turning Point Church of the Nazarene, Traditions, Taco Bell, Shuttner's, Wendy's, and the Kansas Center have 2022 Outstanding Business Award winner, Great Western Dining. A huge thank you to all of our partners, and thank you for proclaiming October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. All right, so I will read this proclamation. Whereas the month of October 2022 has been designated as a National Disability Employment Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities who make important contributions in the workplace, and whereas employment is vital to the independence, empowerment, and quality of life of Americans with disabilities, and whereas the landmark Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 removed barriers that enabled many individuals with disabilities to find more opportunities to use their gifts and talents in the workplace, and whereas the United States Congress by joint resolution approved August 11th, 1945, has designated October as a month to recognize the contributions of Americans with abilities, disabilities, and to encourage all citizens to help ensure their full inclusion in the workforce. And whereas the goals of this city properly give recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities gain full access to training and employment opportunities to create productive and satisfying lives and to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas, and call upon the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations such as Mosaic with expertise in matters concerning professionals who support individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. Signed and sealed this 18th day of October, 2022.
Okay. Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following signed waiver requests for the Fantasy Tree Festival on November 19th, 2022. One at Third Street and Kansas Avenue from November 14th through November 19th, 2022, and two at Fleming Street and Mary Street from October 17th to November 18th of 2022.
I move to approve the waiver, the following signed waiver for the Fantasy Tree Festival on November 19th, 2022.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay. Under the report of the city manager, items 7A through G are staff reports. Are there any questions on the staff reports from the governing body?
Do we have any updates on the railroad crossing since this, the update here?
Uh, no, just the update from here, just the latest one.
I do have a recent update. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Break.
Tyler Patterson, Public Works Operations Manager. As of this morning, I've been dealing with an individual, Mike Morris. He's the BNSF Project Manager. And he let me know that BNSF does plan on fixing that portion of the railroad that's got the hump in it that we had to go back and trim down since that work started two weeks ago. I don't have a time schedule for that yet, but I hope in the next few days I find something out and we'll be able to give that information back, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to say I really appreciated how far the fire department and their organizational has really gotten. I mean, completed, 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 and then in progress was really impressive. And so I think, you know, really, working through that organizational study, it just really says that we, the dollars that were spent on that organizational study really mattered, and you were able to make some use of them. So, I really appreciated that.
Any more questions?
No.
Item 8, meetings of note. As you can see, there are several meetings. Please RSVP with C. Lynn or Corey if you haven't already done so. Item 9A is the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it'd be ordinance number 2565-2022A.
Mayor, I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2565-2022A.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 10A, 1:30 PM, notice of cancellation of a public hearing meant to address comments and concerns regarding Hunter's Glen Phase II Rural Housing Incentive District. Alicia?
I think we got Trent.
I'm gonna fill in Trent Maxwell, Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. So, a couple complications came up on the developers' side trying to iron out some of those things, and they asked us to hold off on this hearing. So, this is just simply letting know that we are canceling the hearing for the 1:30. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. There is no motion required if I'm not mistaken on this, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 10B, the city commission is asked to consider and approve an extension to the sales tax exemption certificate for Sports of the World, and if approved, it'd be resolution number 2967-2022. Danielle?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm before you related to the Sports of the World project for our Star Bond project. The commission, at this point, has already made several actions related to that project dating back all the way to 2017. One of the actions that the commission took was in 2019 to approve a development agreement with GC Investments Incorporated. As part of that development agreement, one of the components of that was an industrial revenue bond that will provide an exemption from applicable retail sales tax on construction materials, equipments, furnishings that are allowed under that state statute. In 2019, the city commission approved an IRB for that sales tax exemption. However, there was an expiration date in that resolution of intent when that was adopted three years ago. And so the item before you today is to extend that IRB resolution of intent another three years. We're very excited that that project is moving dirt, and so this allows them to continue to have that sales tax exemption that they were expecting to receive when this project initially got underway. So, there are two alternatives before you this afternoon. One is to approve the resolution and extend that sales tax exemption to GC Investments for another three years. And alternative two is to not approve the resolution as presented. And I should note that Mary Carson, our Bond Counsel, is the one who has drafted and reviewed this as well. I believe there are a few folks on the development team for Sports of the World. If the commission is interested in hearing an update from them, I'm sure they would be happy to provide that. I would also be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
What's the, just for clarification, what's the actual date of that three-year extension?
So, it's through October of 2025.
2025.
Yep.
If they would, if they would like to give us an update on kind of where, I know they started moving dirt, but if they could give us kind of an update, that would be, that would kind of be nice for us as well as the community to know.
What questions do you guys have?
So, I know you started moving dirt. Is there kind of a projected timeline on completion?
You know, we're, we're hoping, we're looking fall of 2024. You know, there's a lot of moving parts. It's a big project. We're trying to make it even bigger and better than it was. COVID changed a lot of the things in our world, and it probably, it changed a little bit about how we've looked at this project. And we're trying to look and expand on that a little bit and make it even better. But I would say as we sit here today, it would fall of 2024.
Sounds good.
When you say bigger and better, can you share, or is that kind of like to be, or is that kind of a surprise?
Get us excited.
You know, we're hoping to have some demonstratives and different things to share out there in the community soon to get everybody excited for the project. We've been working really hard on it every week, and it's exciting to where it's, it's a lot better than it was, and bigger than it was, and we're excited about it. It's just, it's, it takes some time, and, but, once we get there, we'll be sure to share and share all the details and share all the fun things about it.
All right.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2967-2022.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And I do agree that everybody in the community is really looking forward to it, especially as the dirt gets going again. It's, it's exciting.
Exciting.
Yep.
I never realized that could be so exciting.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, and if approved, it'd be resolution number 2968-2022, and it would abate issues at 305 North First Street.
All right. Good afternoon, again, Mayor Chris Harris, officially Trent Maxwell, Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. So, 305 North First Street. We have a couple items. If you look at the photos, it could be kind of deceiving why we're here, but it is specifically for deep freezers and door refrigerators. The property, we have not been able to reach them. We've sent two letters out, first being August 26th of 2022, and second was September 8th of 2022. And I wouldn't say normally, not to elaborate, but have this be a normal garage option. There's no issues or nuisances typically outside with more maybe eyesore and safety. The eyesore area is probably not as bad, they're probably actually being used. It's more of a safety factor. They are accessible. Any points of outside have some trap net and pulling over, and there's been history with that. So, that's what we're here to ask to remove or make in the background. The alternatives, number one, they already finally approved the attached resolution. Number two, they finally not approved the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative number one. And the fiscal note, if there's any abate of costs occurred by the city, that will be assessed to be partial.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 298068-2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a capital improvement plan administrative policy for the city of Garden City, Kansas. Danielle?
Good afternoon, again, Mayor and Commissioners.
After you.
I am before you this afternoon to talk about the capital improvement plan administrative policy before you as you all are aware, the city has undergone a capital improvement plan process for a number of years, kind of making small modifications along the way over those years. So, in an effort to provide some increased consistency, not only across departments, but also across our projects that we bring before you in that five-year plan, staff has developed an administrative policy for you all to consider. Really, the policy seeks to establish criteria and guidelines that we as staff use in developing that five-year plan that we bring before you for your consideration every year, providing some definitions, particularly as it relates to what is a capital improvement plan project versus some of those other kind of ongoing maintenance projects that sometimes will show up in the CIP just by kind of the nature of how large they can, they can be from time to time. So, this provides a little bit more guidance and parameters about what is included and what would ever prove kind of maintain and stay in those department operating budgets. It also provides some clarity about roles and responsibilities throughout the various stages of the process as well. Additionally, the policy would establish an internal capital improvement plan committee that would be a cross-departmental team that would be used to review each of the projects for consistency and to make sure that, again, we have departments talking with one another. If there are projects that may have some alignment, and we may be able to get crews in in one location to a couple of projects at once instead of doing a project, one project in one year and another project in another year. And it gives some criteria by which that, that committee would review those, those various projects as well. It also incorporates a public outreach portion into the process and recognizes that many of these projects will go to an appropriate advisory board for their review and recommendation as well. Finally, the policy outlines a capital improvement plan fund with goals for what that fund balance would look like over the, a number of years, and a process to amend in the CIP formally as well. We do believe with the implementation of our new financial system that all of those things will be a lot easier to do administratively once that system is up and running. And should the city commission ultimately decide to move forward with this policy as presented, it would be added to our financial management guidelines, and we've included what that additional language in those guidelines would be. And this policy in full would be an attachment to those financial management guidelines as well. And finally, I want to note that this policy has been reviewed by our auditors and was developed by bringing a cross-departmental team together to kind of talk through what should be included and what should not be included before it came to you all for consideration. So, the alternatives before you are one, to approve the capital improvement plan administrative policy as presented. Alternative two is to not approve the policy as presented. And alternative three would be, would be to provide staff with additional direction. Staff recommends alternative one. There is no financial impact to the city related to this policy. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very in-depth policy, that's for sure. I mean, we've had a number, number of years to kind of compile. My only question was, when I was reading through this, the city capital projects coordinator, is that somebody that's going to be new, or is that just part of the staff's additional duties as assigned?
The additional duties as assigned, yes. But it gives us at least a core person we can, we can reach out to that can help capital industry, administratively manage the process.
Sure. Okay.
So, I had a question considering the funding. So, is this going to be, is it going to be a line item in the budget now? Or is, and it's gonna, where are you going to derive those? Are you going to assign? Is the city going to assign a certain amount of funding to this every year, or?
Great question. Great question. So, the way that we've identified the capital improvement fund is ideally all of the millennial technical, not enterprise funds. So, exclude, you know, the electric and water and those sorts of, those sorts of funds. All of those non-enterprise funds, those projects would show up in our capital improvement fund, and that's where you would see those costs coming out of. There would then be a transfer likely from the general fund to, that would service the revenue to then pay for those projects. So, you would see that transfer coming into that capital improvement fund. But ideally, all of those non-enterprise fund projects would show up all in one fund.
Well, and it even said in here it'd take up to five years with the fund, funding balance to get to the anticipated point for funding some of these projects.
Yes. You know, we recognize that it'll take a number of years to get us to the point where we can, can truly have everything that you can cash finance out of that fund.
Sure.
That, that is appropriate. You'll still see debt projects and things like that where they make sense. But the idea is all of those kind of smaller capital projects will all come out of that fund.
So, I know that we've used geo-funds. I mean, geo-funding as a very, I mean, hopefully, we've done it really responsibly, and I know that, you know, some of the projects, we talked about the pool, 2040 seems like years away, but it really isn't. But I, so you think about this idea of, is that going to eliminate some of that need for those geo-funding? Or is that what, I mean, my, my hope would be that, because geo-funding, again, you're always at, you know, with the interest rates and those things, and sometimes that's not advantageous. But I'm curious about how that might affect, you know, the use of, hopefully diminishing the use of geo-funding, so.
Yes, I think the idea is to the extent we can cash finance projects, especially those, those smaller ones. It's really hard when you're talking about a $20 million facility, things like that. Still, geo-debt is very much the appropriate funding source for that. But some of those smaller projects, being able to cash finance those, that's really the intent of it. So, we can kind of borrow from ourselves, for lack of a better term, and not have to pay some of those interest costs. So, something like the, the Garden Rapids, probably not, but some of the smaller, more kind of routine-ish projects, the idea would hopefully over time, we'd be able to cash finance more of those.
It's definitely something that's been needed for a long time, so thank you for all your work on this.
Yeah, very comprehensive, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve the capital improvement plan administrative policy as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
All right. Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and accept a bid from Smokey Hill LLC for $2,206,033 for the Fulton Street Drainage Project. Tyler?
Good afternoon, again, Mayor and Commissioners. Tyler Patterson, Public Works Operations Manager. I'll be presenting my Mayorhead Public Works and Utilities Directors absence here. The governing body is asked to consider and accept the bid from Smokey Hill LLC for $2,206,033. That KDOT share would be $1,736,000, and the city's share portion, $860,000 for the Fulton Street Drainage Project. Bids are advertised and open on September 21st, 2022, at 1:00 PM for the Kansas Department of Transportation Seaclip Storm Drainage Project on Fulton Street. Only one bid was received from Smokey Hill LLC for $2,206,033. This bid was over the engineer's construction estimate of $1,776,592.82. Although the bid was higher than the recommended 2% allowance over the engineer's estimate indicated in the financial management guidelines, the governing body can still choose to award the bid. After considerable discussion with city staff and KDOT staff, KDOT agreed to increase its portion of funding for the project by $736,000, if the city would increase its contribution by $185,000. This would be determined to be the most cost-effective approach to getting the project completed. KDOT and staff believe that if it were rebid, the price would only increase in today's bidding environment of projects. KDOT indicated that this cost increase had been seen on almost every one of the projects in 2022. The project from Washington Street to Ballenger Street includes a selling 1,982 feet of storm sewer piping, a 15 storm inlet, 1,600 feet of new curb and gutter, 3,600 square yards of concrete pavement, 505 square yards of concrete sidewalk, and numerous other small items. The city included $600,000 with the 2021 geo-bonds from the city's share of the cost of this project. The city has budgeted an additional $75,000 for the project costs from the Drain Utility Fund. Staff has evaluated and identified three alternative funding sources for the additional $185,000 for the city's share of the increased cost. The three alternative sources are for the remaining allocated ARPA funds, utilizing excess revenues from the 0.1% sales tax above the 2022 debt obligations, and utilizing the current fund balance of the Drain Utility Fund, which is budgeted to be carried over in 2023. Should the governing body approve the bid and agree to the shared amounts with KDOT, the work is started early this March 6th, 2023, and then later than May 1st, 2023, the contract will add 140 days to complete. There's six different alternatives here. Sorry about, I pulled it out, number two. Alternative number one, accept the bid from Smokey Hill LLC for the $2,206,033 with KDOT's share of $1,736, with the city's share being $860,000, utilizing the ARPA funds for the additional $185,000. Number two, accept the bid and utilize the 0.1% sales tax revenue. Number three, accept the bid and utilize the cash balance of the Drain Utility Fund. Option four, accept the bid and provide city staff direction for where to expense the additional $185,000. Option five, reject the bid and turn back the Seaclip grant to KDOT. And option six, reject the bid and ask KDOT to revisit the project. Staff recommends alternative one, accept the bid from Smokey Hill LLC for the $2,206,033 with KDOT's share of the $1,736,000, and the city's share being $860,000 for the Fulton Street Drainage Project, utilizing the ARPA funds for the additional $185,000 of the unbudgeted city's share. On fiscal year, the city's obligation for the project would cost $860,000. The city would pay $600,000 from the 2021 geo-bonds revenues and $75,000 from the Drain Utility Fund. If approved, the additional $185,000 would be paid utilizing the source selected by the governing body. the source selected by the governing body.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
So, yeah, I was wondering, how long will there be, like, I know sections as they're doing these, will there be any businesses that will lose access to their business during this time or?
No, we looked at that and for the majority of them, we've had an alternative route for them not to lose business during this timeframe.
Okay. Because I know that when they redid Fulton Street, I mean, that was a really, that was years ago, but it really, a lot of businesses suffered. So I really appreciate you utilizing that to making sure they can stay open, so.
Good.
Well, I move that we accept a bid from Smoky Hills LLC for $2,206,033, uh, 200, whatever that, $206,333 with KDOT's share of $1,736,000 and the city's share being $860,000 for the Fulton Street Drainage Project, utilizing the ARPA funds for the additional $185,000 of the unbudgeted city's share.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to do the first alternate one. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item 12C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a 13-month agreement with Linda Lowmeyer beginning December 1st, 2022 and ending December 31st, 2023 to serve as municipal court judge in a total amount of $109,850. The City of Garden City advertised for municipal court judge on an, and an interview committee completed interviews with finalists on October 6th, 2022. Linda Lowmeyer was identified as a top candidate and an agreement for contracted municipal court judge services was negotiated. It has been approved by Ms. Lowmeyer. The City of Garden City's organizational structure shows a dual reporting responsibility to the city manager and the city commission. The practice has been for the appointment of the municipal court judge to be made by the city manager with confirmation from the city commission. The ongoing evaluation performance is then monitored as it would be other city employees, with the opportunity for the city commission to provide input. Having the position filled with a service contract accomplishes the same design for both the appointment of the judge and the ongoing evaluation performance. If appointed, Ms. Lowmeyer brings to the municipal court judge position 21 years of legal work in Fannie County that includes experience as a prosecutor and defense counsel. She is a Garden City native and is very active in the community and currently serves as a board member for the Western Kansas Community Foundation and the Southwest Kansas Bar Association. The agreement is for 13 months at a rate of $8,450 per month, and at its conclusion will align subsequent 12-month agreements with the city's fiscal year. Both parties may terminate the agreement with a 60-day notice. So staff has put together three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. Alternative number one would be to approve a 13-month agreement for municipal court judge services with Linda Lowmeyer as presented. Alternative number two would be to approve an agreement for municipal court judge services with changes and submit the agreement to Linda Lowmeyer for consideration. And finally, alternative number three would be to not approve an agreement and provide direction to staff. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve a 13-month agreement for municipal court judge services with Linda Lowmeyer as presented. And the fiscal note is the current expense for the municipal court judge is shown as a full-time employee and a personnel line item with the general fund's municipal court budget. The $8,450 monthly amount or $109,850 total over the 13 months of the agreement will be expensed from the same budget but will be shown in a contract services line item rather than a personnel line item, given that the municipal court judge under the arrangement is now a contracted service and not an employee of the city. The corresponding benefits line items will not be expensed for the portion associated previously with this position. Any questions from the governing body?
I move to approve the, a 13-month agreement for municipal court judge services with Linda Lowmeyer as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 12D. Staff requests governing body consideration of an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, specifically for pending litigation. City commission and the city attorney will be present and it should take around 15 minutes.
Can we do this?
Yeah, that's what the mayor said. Can we move this to the end after the consent agenda and the commissioner reports? That way everybody else can head on out.
Okay.
Don't have to stick around. And we, with consent agenda, item E2, we are going to have to pull that and do that separately. So Commissioner Sessna can step down from that item.
Okay. We'll go ahead and approve, the governor choose, okay, so approve, sorry. The item, it would be item E1 and E3 for the consent agenda approval.
I move that we approve items E1 and E3.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items E1 and E3. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay. Item 12E2. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the lease agreement between the City of Garden City and Crosby Flying Services LLC for the lease of property located at the Garden City Regional Airport.
So I move that we approve item E2.
I'll, I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second.
I'll second.
You take it.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second with me seconding.
Yes, that's good.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. All right, we all want to. Give a second for Commissioner Sessna to get back and commissioner reports. All right, Commissioner Under.
So I really appreciated the pre-meeting, hearing about, I, I know the summer, it seems like some, I'm glad because today makes summer seem really far away. I was shocked how many days over 100. That was, I, I didn't count them all, but I'm sure we felt them all. But I was really excited about the numbers and just the way that Garden Rapids is really beginning to, to take shape and also becoming a stable and a fixture in our community. So I really appreciated the report. I'm excited for the next season and all the improvements that they're about to do. I also attended this week a resource fair on, I think it was Wednesday. It's, the days seem to run into each other, but it was, uh, over at Harold Long Park. It was really well attended, so much fun. And having people walk, walk, exercise while they gathered. Now, the more stuff you gathered, the harder it was to walk, so. And people were offering some really neat resources, but Brittany is, I can't figure, I think it's Brittany Martin who did the, the organization. But she did an excellent job and had lots of volunteers and a lot of really, it was a great place to do. And the weather, absolutely perfect, which you can't say that very often in Western Kansas. I also just want to say thank you to the police department and to the fire department and EMS. I know that a lot of them and the sheriff's department, a lot of them have been out there a lot. I hear the fire engines, just location to Mirror Street going a lot. And I really appreciate just all the work that our first responders do. I, you know, sometimes we're at home at night or, you know, and, or asleep and they're all still doing their job. And so I, I really appreciate all the work that they're doing. I'm also excited about all of the different things that are going on in the city. Now, I'm not really good at all the sports. As, as Commissioner Ortiz says, I, I can't list all of those things, but there are some really unique opportunities coming up over these next several months. And so excited about fall, hopefully a very long, long fall and a medium-sized winter. But I just want to, I just take advantage of the neat things that are going in our community.
All right. Commissioner Sessna.
Yeah, nice, a lot of good information during our pre-meeting. Hopefully we gave some good input on how to move forward with Garden Rapids at the big pool for the coming years. Just wanted to mention that today is the last day to register to vote in the general election. So if you haven't registered, today is the deadline, so get in. There is a number of ways to do it, either online or you can go to the county offices and register. This week is National School Bus Safety Week. You see the yellow buses and activity buses driving around. The governor declared tomorrow as School Transportation Day in Kansas. So I'd like to give a shout out to all those bus drivers that are transporting our students to and from school in a safe manner. Last week, I attended the Kansas League of Municipalities State meeting. A lot of good information sessions. I really liked and enjoyed the one on growing your own leaders. A lot of good information at that, at that meeting. Really liked the comments that they talked about on how they interviewed people from different aspects and standpoints. So a lot of good information at the Kansas League meeting. One of the policy, big policy changes or they actually added was talking about water. I know Kansas, the legislature's looking at that, but that's one of the new policies that they actually added into the legislative policies that they approved at the league. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at water and that's part of our goal, but I think it's now across the entire state. And I think especially more so now that because of the drought and we, you know, really concerned now about water. I did attend also the Fannie County Workforce Discussion, which was held last week as well. A lot of good information and talking about how to grow our own here locally. So hopefully those discussions will continue with all the stakeholders. Glad to have the hatchet back home once again. It was great to see. Had to travel to Wichita for that, but next year, it's been promised. Heard last night at the school board meeting that we, they will play here in Garden City at Buffalo Stadium. Also, good to see the progress on the terminal building at the airport. Everybody's really getting excited about that. I signed the I-beam, so for the last one of the beams to go in. So really exciting on that process. And just a final note that the state of the city will be tomorrow. So getting kind of excited to see what the mayor will say tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Ortiz.
All right. So I'll kind of, the football game, and I love talking about sports because I just, my kids are in sports all the time. But I did talk to a gate attendant who was there at the Wichita game, at the Hatchet Game, or, yeah, Dodge City, Garden City, there you go if you don't know what the Hatchet Game is. But they did have an attendance of 2,100 people show up. So that's, I mean, that was an awesome turnout for them to go over and support for those kids in football. Continuing on with football, Battle of the Birds happened also last week on Thursday, KH versus Horse Good. I mean, it's great to see these kids grow and where they're actually starting to play football. And then, you know, even goes all the way back to like rec football. But then, you know, they get separated in middle school and then they come back together in high school. And so it's great to see that they all start, you know, get along and, and get, get to playing in sports together. So it is football weather. So it's getting colder. Check your sprinklers, turn them off, you know, do all that good fun stuff that we as homeowners do as far as when, when cold weather, weather hits. So I just like to throw that out there. But I did attend the Black Hills Dinner last week. I think that was last week. My days are running together. I've been working long hours. But it was, it was great to see that Black Hills does a lot of service in the community and, and with fundraisers and things like that, that they do with this, this community and schools. I mean, that's, it's awesome. We actually did, I, I reached out to Black Hills and they actually helped us do a tailgate at the Battle of the Birds game. So we served hot dogs for the fans and that was, that was an awesome event. So thanks to Black Hills for their service and commitment to the community here. And I think with that, dirt work is flying in Garden City. And like I always said, it's great, great things happening in Garden City. We're growing. So if you don't know what's happening, get in touch with the city, get in touch with your commissioners, your, your mayor. We don't know everything that's going on yet, or, you know, we're not supposed to say. So we know what we know and we'll tell you what we know, but you've got to reach out to us. So, thanks.
Commissioner Under.
Yeah, thanks to Aaron and staff for putting together the pre-meeting today. It was always nice to, especially with it being year two of Garden Rapids, to be able to kind of see some numbers and to be able to compare to last year and really kind of see the growth. And it's, it's exciting to think about what the future is going to hold with that. I also attended the League of Kansas Municipalities meeting in Overland Park. And, you know, one of the things that you forget about is, you know, when you're here all the time, you don't really have the perspective of what's going on in the rest of the state. And some of the things that other commissions and other mayors and other city staff are, are working on and dealing with. And we're really in a pretty fortunate position. I mean, we get along pretty well and we have a great staff and we have, you know, the ability to, you know, move the city forward. And I think we do a really good job of making sure that that's first and foremost in, in everything that we do, keeping our goals in place and, and setting realistic goals. And I just appreciate the fact that, that we really do work together quite well. And that, I think, is pretty obvious when you go and you hear some of the stories. But it's just a great opportunity to also, you know, kind of get to know each other on a different level too. So I appreciated that. But the zoo is Saturday from 4 to 8. I don't have any little kids at home anymore, but it's always a fun time. And I know you get a lot of good candy and, and stuff. I'm also looking forward to hearing what the mayor has to say tomorrow at the state of the city. So no pressure, but I think you'll do a great job. So that's all I have.
All right. So we got a lot of things I was going to say already done. The pre-meeting was good, really good information about Garden Rapids at the big pool. It was interesting to hear how much water we're saving now. To put that in context, before we reconstructed the big pool, about one at every 60 gallons was, that was used in the city Garden City was lost to the ground at the big pool. So just in, in water savings alone, huge, huge improvements, but also better facility, much better utilization and so forth. So that was a really good pre-meeting. Like the other commissioners attended Black Hills meeting that was good. Kansas League of Municipalities was good. I heard last night, and, and, did you go to the Battle of the Bands, or Battle of the Bands, Battle of the Birds?
Yes.
Okay. Was there a jazz band playing for Horse Good?
I did not hear that.
So, okay, so I, I heard just last night, I went to a Horse Good concert and they said there was the first time that their jazz band was able to, in three years, perform at a sporting event. But I'm not sure if it was at that one or a different one. But we're talking about sports and, and getting youth involved.
Yeah, I was always hot dogs, so I don't.
Oh, that's true, yeah. So those kinds of things and, and just the, the things like allowing the bands to play and stuff like that, starting at younger ages and stuff like that is, is also good to see. At that end, I'm a little bit torn on that. My daughter goes to Horse Good, but I went to KH, so.
That's rough.
Halloween is coming up. Just keep in mind, when you're driving around on Halloween night, when you're going from place to place, please keep in mind, kids will be at crosswalks, hopefully in crosswalks, but also just out and about. And I know we do better now with lights and stuff like that, but still, when we're going around on Halloween night, please pay attention while we're driving around. And then, like people have said, Chamber Breakfast is tomorrow with the State of the City address. And I'm looking forward to what I have to say. I guess with that, we will move back into the executive session, 12D motion. If somebody would like to make that.
How long do we need to be in?
15.
Um, I think 15 minutes would be fine. We can always extend if you guys ask a lot of questions.
I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B2 pertaining to consultation with the attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, having, who else do we need? You, of course, just you. Okay. City Council Cunningham for 15 minutes, starting at 1:47, ending at 2:02.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we will go into executive session.